Okay, we are now recording.
I call to order the meeting of the Green Bay Common Council for Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. Clerk?
Love her present, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have a quorum and we will proceed. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible.
Now, before we move to the invocation, I just want to introduce Pastor Rachel Canoke from Trinity Lutheran. Really appreciate her making some time to join us this evening. My family and I have had the privilege of attending a few services over at Trinity Lutheran and have always really appreciated the sermons that have been offered. And no disrespect to any of the priests from my wife's childhood who might be on the Zoom tonight, but after witnessing the sermon that Pastor Rachel offered, not this past Easter, but the previous one, Emily said it was the best sermon she'd ever heard. So really lucky to have Rachel joining us tonight to offer the invocation, which I think is for a pretty important meeting, hoping that we'll be able to advance the Equal Rights Ordinance, and wanted to have Pastor Rachel here as somebody who is obviously a member of the faith community, but also a real advocate for social justice and equal rights in our city here. So with that, we'd like to pass the mic to Pastor Rachel Canoke from Trinity Lutheran. Pastor?
Thank you so much for having me and for the invitation. And Mayor, I don't appreciate you setting the bar quite so high, but we do gather tonight, and I would invite you to just take a moment and pray with me. So I do pray that the Lord would be with you. Gracious God, we thank you for your gift of vocation, and especially for all of these men and women who have answered your call to serve their community in public leadership. We know that no matter our background, our story, we are all equal before you, because we are equally imperfect. We each come with our own ideas of goodness, our own convictions of right, our own insistence that our way is the way. We'd ask that you would soften our arrogance and crack open our stubborn hearts, open our eyes to see your vision for who we could be, remind us that there is more to choosing good than just hating evil, more to being faithful than just standing still. Give us all the courage we need to take each next step. And if we err, let us err on the side of grace, on the side of justice, on the side of love, until the world that we live in isn't a reflection of us, but of you. Give us the strength and patience to work for the day when each hungry child, every lonely elder, every beautiful child wondering if they belong, knows that there is a place at the table for them. Lord, this is not our world, it is yours. Keep us humble in the work you've set before us. We might keep growing into the people that you are calling us to be. In your loving name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Now we are on to approval of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Stevens, to approve the minutes from the October 6, 2020 meeting. Any corrections? Seeing no requests, all in favor, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any changes to be made?
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Johnson.
I emailed Chief of Staff Jeffries on this, and I think she was checking into it, but the Landmarks Commission report is missing from the agenda, but it was actually included in the Agenda Packet on the website. So I'm just curious if we're supposed to be taking that report up tonight or not.
Very good. Chief of Staff Jeffries?
Yes, I had actually asked our planner Stephanie Hummel to address the issue, since I, she's the one who actually is managing that report, and I couldn't see what Alder Johnson saw in, from my end. So unfortunately, I could not see where that report was mistakenly placed.
Sure, it was published on the website Agenda Packet, and I think because it's not on the agenda, I presume it's a moot point if it's not been published, and that it would be taken up at the next meeting, but I was just looking to maybe get some clarity on that before we proceeded.
This is Attorney Chavez, that is correct.
So we'll just address it at our next meeting? Attorney Chavez, we can just take it up at our next meeting?
Yes, so it would just be, I don't know, included in the packet, there's nothing to do unless it's on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Alder LaFave, on the agenda?
May I just make a quick suggestion for Alder Johnson? It's really hard sometimes to hear what he's saying because it's such an echo, that he should get a headset that he can plug into his computer. It'll keep that echoing down, I believe.
Thanks, Alder. So we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting the agenda? Will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. On to report by the mayor. Just a couple of things to touch on tonight. First, just wanted to let you all know that I will be doing a little bit of a budget, open house. Did that last year and was able to do it in person on the east side and the west side. Because we're living in COVID times, I'll be doing it virtually, but planning to do it Thursday, October 29th. Be sure to send all that information to Alders, so you can attend or watch the recording of it, and obviously inviting members of the public to participate and sit through that presentation. So details will be forthcoming on that, but just wanted to put a pin in that date for you all. And then, of course, we have a meeting of our joint Personnel and Finance meeting on November 2nd to take up the budget, and then final adoption by our Common Council will take place on November 10th. Just wanted to note that for the public as well. Also, just wanted to do a little bit of an update on voting in the City of Green Bay. Today we had our first day of early in-person voting. Don't have the final count as of 3:00, but late this afternoon, we had over 430 people who had voted in person here at City Hall today. Just to give you a sense for the total number of people that have voted in the city, that sits at right around 18,000. Ballots actually returned either in person or through the mail, and ballots requested sit at 26,000. So ballots requested is about 46% of our registered electorate, which is a really strong number. So of course, just continuing to encourage people, if they've made that request for an absentee ballot, to participate that way. Otherwise, we have the early in-person option at City Hall here all week through Saturday this week, and then again next week through Saturday. The only thing to note is on that final Saturday, it'll be just registered voters who'll be able to vote in person early at City Hall. Of course, we always have same-day registration at the polls on November 3rd, so if people are not registered in time, they can always do that. But just directing people to our website, feel free to log on and check out all the voting options we have available, encouraging all of our eligible citizenry to participate in this election of utmost importance. So with that, I will move along to announcements. Any announcements?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Alder LaFave, point taken. I'll look into the microwave, to the microphone. Sorry if it's a bad audio connection tonight. But since I anticipate that we may not pull the item later, I wanted to commend Chief Smith on the agenda item, talking about the increasing gun violence in our community. I appreciate the fact that he's already put together a task force, that he's identified, you know, sort of the challenge and the problem that we have in our community. He's stakeholders. And so I just wanted to at least take an opportunity recognizing that we may not have it later, to thank the chief for swiftly responding to obviously that concern that has been raised in our community. We appreciate everything that our police department does to keep our neighborhood safe. So thank you, chief.
Thanks, Alder. Thank you, Alder. Additional announcements?
Alder Steuer?
Alder Steuer, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to read this a little bit. "The local Salvation Army has teamed up with Feeding America Eastern Wisconsin. Attention, stock the shelves, 2911 Drive, Appleton, Wisconsin, on food banks. A campaign is on from October 1st to October 31st to collect monetary donations. Five million has been raised since 2010. Other area pantries that could use donations are the Pulaski Community Pantry, Sturgeon Bay's Lakeland CAP, the Golden House in Green Bay, and the Green Bay Assembly of God Food Pantry in my District 10. Pastor Matt Miller there stated that they have handed out more than 10,000 bags of food and performed nearly 1,200 deliveries since March. They are in acute need of freezer space and refrigerated space. Their address is 1460 Shawno Avenue, Green Bay 54303-497-2800. Any help that can be brought forward during this tough time would be appreciated. Thank you."
Thanks for that announcement. Any others?
Real quick, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to extend condolences to Alderman Vanderlees and the loss of his brother. Roger Vanderlees, as many of you are aware, served the City of Green Bay and other community groups for many decades. The Vanderlees name is very well-known. No one has served their city well through the years, and I don't know if it all started with Roger, but he certainly had a part in that. So my sincere condolences to you, John, as you grieve, and thank you to your brother for years of service to the City of Green Bay.
Thank you for that, Alder. I certainly would pass along all of our condolences to the Vanderlees family.
Mayor?
Yes, Chief of Staff Jeffries?
I'm going to mute everybody. I seem to be getting some interference, so I just want to make sure it's not our system. Just give me one moment. Oh, yeah, that, unfortunately, that is, that must be something in our system. I'll talk to Director Monik. Thank you.
All right, are we good to proceed, Ms. Jeffries?
Yes, we are. I needed to unmute myself. Yes, we are ready to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing no other announcements, we'll move along to recognitions and awards. An award to recognize here. City of Green Bay received the American Public Works Association Project of the Year 2020 for the Webster Avenue Reconstruction. So just wanted to recognize the great work done by Steve Grenier, Director of our Department of Public Works, the entire team who is associated with that project within our department here in the City of Green Bay, and Ayers Associates as well, and their entire team who contributed to that effort. Obviously, fantastic project from our perspective, but pretty meaningful to be recognized by the American Public Works Association. So sincerest congratulations to, as I said, Director Grenier, our employees within DPW, and all those at Ayers and Associates. Director Grenier, any thoughts from you on the award?
Thanks, Mayor. It seems almost unbelievable to think that it was 13 years ago when I came to the city in 2007, that I was handed a concept plan and one of the worst streets in the entire city. And over the past 13 years, we've been able to see that concept plan go from a pipe dream to fruition on the northeast side, and really serve as a gateway project. So again, thank you for mentioning this in front of the Common Council. Many people on the staff and our consultant partners at Ayers Associates for helping make that dream a reality. And I'd like to take some time very quickly to recognize one of the individuals. When we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony out there last fall, I did recognize Tom Geezy, who's our Right-of-Boy Specialist. Tom's been with the city for over 30 years, and he's been instrumental in every major project we've done. And I feel comfortable in saying that he was probably the linchpin on this project as well. The project simply wouldn't have happened without all the effort and time that Tom put into it. To work with the property owners, we had 24 full acquisitions of property out there, and well over 80 individual property interests that needed to be acquired. So Tom put a lot of effort into this, and I wanted to make sure that we did recognize him specifically for his efforts. But very proud, very happy with the outcome of the project. I think everyone's been pleased. And nobody's losing fillings coming in from the northeast side anymore, so that's a good thing.
That is a very good thing. Well, thank you for that, Director Grenier. It's also my understanding that Tom is never, is not ever permitted to retire. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we keep trying to, we keep trying to say, and he keeps threatening. So I do believe it's in the not-too-distant future, but not imminent.
Good to hear. Well, very good. Congratulations again, and thanks to Department of Public Works and Ayers Associates for that great work. With that, we will move on to appointments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell, to confirm the new appointments. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. Those appointments have been approved. Reappointments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any discussion on reappointments? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it, and those reappointments are made. On to ordinance, is second reading for adoption.
Demand or suspension of the rules. Take up items 1 through 7 with a roll call vote. Move to suspend the rules. Second.
Motion made to suspend the rules, made by Alder Dorf.
Would you take up number 4 separately?
Yes, we can certainly do that. Alder Dorf, would you like to change that motion?
Sure. Move to approve items, I mean, move to four items, all the items except number 4.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. All in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. That's to adopt all of those items with the exception of item 4. Please use the board.
Mine's not coming up. I vote aye.
And those are adopted. 12-0. On to item K4.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any discussion?
Number 4, I'd like to speak on that.
Yeah, Alder Vanderlees, go ahead.
I'd just like to know what the City of Green Bay is going to do as far as educating the public, as far as to stop discrimination. Are we just going to put the ordinance in effect and have no educational drive as far as to stop discrimination, things like that? As far as in the housing and in treatment of people, of human rights? What is the city going to be doing as far as educating the people, the public? I'd like to know that.
Yeah, I could speak to a little bit Alder, if you'd like.
Thank you.
You bet. Well, I, yeah, I can just address it by saying that I think a really important piece of our ordinance is the creation of the Equal Rights Commission, which will be populated by eight citizen members plus one alder who will be serving on the commission. An important duty of the commission is to communicate both with my office, with our Common Council, and with the public at large on these issues. So I think that's going to be an important role for them to play, certainly as an educational one, on the status of non-discrimination here in the City of Green Bay, and different things that we can address. You know, I think your point's well-taken. I know that there is, as a result of this conversation, there are a couple alders who are going to be engaged with, you know, the landlord community here in Green Bay, Alder Stevens and Alder Steuer. I think that's an opportunity for some education as well. So those are two points that I would make. Alder Dorf, as the author, I would go to you as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I certainly think that being, that we are city council, we certainly can lead by example, and so this ordinance will be one step in that direction, us leading by example and supporting the different groups and putting our stamp of approval on treating all equally. I know that as formerly part of the school district, there are many educational opportunities through the school system for the students and parents. There's many different things that students do, clubs, diversity clubs, LGBTQ clubs. So our kids are probably far ahead of us, and maybe they can be asked once this COVID is over to help us with spreading more of the education, you know? And I think we, as alders, might need education. So, you know, I look forward to perhaps having discussions here at City Hall or staff developments, as we called them when I was in education, and learning about these things. I feel that we'll be able to move forward on this and that our community will welcome the education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we use the board on that, please, Mayor?
You bet. Any additional comments?
Mayor?
Yeah, Alder, go ahead.
I'd like to open the floor for interested parties to speak on this.
Second.
Motion made to open the floor by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The floor is open. Please just state your name and address for the council before beginning with your comments.
Can I speak? This is David Bartikovsky, 2697 Bay Summit Road, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 5430. I just want, I would just like to make a comment and applaud you guys for putting in place a committee that's going to listen to this and interact with the local government and the police, I hope, as well. I think in saving grace, you know, I'm lucky to have six children, very young, and I think they're our future. They think a lot, more so fairly in terms of equality and things of that nature. So I think we're on the right track with our young people, and I applaud you guys for taking action and implementing a committee like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartikovsky. Any other members of the public?
Mayor, we have Edward, who's raised his hand. Edward, can you please, thank you, unmuted yourself, state your first and last name for the committee and your address.
Yes, I'm Edward Jensen. I live at 541 Alpine Drive in Green Bay. Now, I wrote to Alder Dorf and Alder Corpus Dax and Alder Wery and also the mayor's office with specific questions about this ordinance, and I've yet to hear anything back. And I don't know if any of them are prepared to answer any of those questions tonight, but I thought it's kind of unusual that you ask an elected official, and they don't receive a response. I'm glad it just went away. That's all I have to say.
Jensen, any other members of the public?
Yes, Mayor, we have Melissa Decker-Ceslock. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the committee.
Melissa Decker-Ceslock, PO Box 8982, Green Bay, 54308. I want to thank you, Mayor and Alders. Earlier today, I don't know if you had the opportunity to read it, but I sent out an email to all of you, and I included a video link to WBA story by Aisha Morales regarding children who are students in the school, in the school district here, who have been experiencing many of the same things I experienced over 35 years ago. Long story short, there's nothing to be afraid of. What we're asking for is for the same thing that most everybody else has. We want to be seen as humans. We want to be respected and treated with dignity. We're not asking for any more rights than what each and every one of you has. We just want to be able to enjoy our rights and be able to live like you do without fear of discrimination, racism, or any type of hate. And even though I've been talking about my own experiences as a black child and young adult growing up here, I would be remiss in not including my brothers and sisters and people who do not identify as any gender, people of the LGBTQ plus community. I know last time there were some comments made, and I, which I don't understand. It shouldn't matter what your body parts are. It shouldn't matter how you identify. What should matter is that you, as a human being, as I stated earlier, deserve the same respect and dignity that everybody else has. We're not saying that you can't have your prejudices. Everybody has bias. And what we're saying and asking for is that you don't act with those, with the discrimination and with those biases in mind. And with that, I'd like to thank you, and I hope that each and every one of you votes in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ceslock. Next, we have Corey King. Mr. King, please unmute yourself. State your name and address for the committee, for the council, sorry.
Dr. Corey King, 401 North Washington Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54301. I am the Vice Chancellor for University Inclusivity and Student Affairs at the University of Wisconsin Green Bay. I am here tonight, once again, to speak on behalf of Chancellor Alexander and the university in supporting the passage of this ordinance. We believe that the Green Bay City has an opportunity, once again, to be a leader in our state in terms of inclusivity and diversity and equity, and send a clear message to everyone that we are a community that believes that everyone should be treated equally in the eyes of each other and our society. So we support Alder Dorf in this endeavor. We support the mayor and the council, and applaud you in your consideration of this very important ordinance. The impact to our faculty, our staff, and our students, who are part of the community, is paramount. And we join you, the council and the city, in this celebration of an opportunity of inclusivity, diversity, and equity. And with the passage, our hope, we will join the city in educating anyone about this ordinance and about the importance of inclusivity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Next, we have Kelly. Kelly, please unmute yourself. Give your first and last name for the committee, sorry for the council, and also your address.
My name is Kelly Delvo, and my address is 17 Chapelview in Green Bay. I just wanted to thank everybody who has been in support. I just wanted to thank everybody who has been in support of this, and I really feel as leaders in our community, it's your duty to make sure that everyone in our community is inclusive and has equity. I understand that there may be some personal or religious biases that make you uncomfortable. However, I would ask that, as an elected official, you look at it at it from the standpoint of this is becoming a much more diverse community compared to 30 years ago. And we need to embrace everybody who is part of this community and love them for who they are. And I'm really hoping that with the passage of this, we will make some steps forward. I believe the committee will be an amazing asset, and I love the idea of having training at the leadership level as well to help foster that understanding of what a community that is inclusive and equitable can look like. And I truly believe it would make Green Bay just a wonderful, wonderful place if everybody can embrace that. So I'm really hopeful that this passes tonight with everybody voting yes.
Thank you, Ms. Delvo. Next, we have Goosey Head Abby. Ms. Abby, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Abby Ringel, address is 2042 Memorial Drive. And I just want to thank the mayor and the city council for essentially putting into the city code that everyone in this city is included, everyone in this city matters, and giving a voice to maybe people who don't look like us or sound like us or identify like us. And I'm just very encouraged that, you know, the majority of the council has has spoken in favor of this and everyone on the council to vote in favor and show that you two would like to see Green Bay be the diverse, robust community that we all know it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ringel. Okay, Mayor, I don't have anyone else who's raised their hand in Zoom using that feature. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council. Anyone else wishing to speak?
That'll entertain a motion to close the floor.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach to close the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. You guys have it, the floor is closed. Any additional comments from council on item K4? Seeing none, we will use the board.
All vote aye.
Alder.
I'm afraid mine's not working either, and I vote aye.
And that is adopted, nine to three. Very good, congratulations, Alder Dorf. We're on to the Redevelopment Authority.
To approve.
Made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Galvin to approve report, which is reported by the Redevelopment Authority from the meeting on October 13, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number three.
Item three, any others?
I just need to be recorded as abstaining on item number four, as my employer is is one of the beneficiaries of that allocation.
Okay, very good, that will be noted. Any other items to be handled separately? Item three will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. You guys have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item three.
Second.
Who made the motion, Mayor?
Alder Scannell.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. The item was pulled by Alder Weary. You have the floor, Alder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciated Director Renier Wig giving me information by email, that that helped a great deal. I just had a follow-up question, more of a clarification. This money is going to be pooled with previous money, and some RFPs, I believe, are being sent out for a plan on how to proceed, and that will go back to RDA. Will that, again, come to council?
I don't think it would come back to council unless you'd request that it would come back to council. Normally, normally the council would approve that, and then the RDA would handle the RFP and the approvals.
My concern would be that we don't get any input on on what plan is actually selected. We're setting money aside, but we have no idea what it's going to be used for. Does that, does that make sense?
It does. It's right. The RFP is for homelessness issues pertaining to persons with COVID and the issues with COVID. I suspect we'll get a number of applications for that, and then we would go through the ranking process, but...
Like, what type of groups do you think, like existing groups within the city, or...
They they need to be providing services within the city. There are a number of housing agencies that are dealing with COVID and homelessness, so I would, I would suspect a number of them would be applying for these funds.
And this is a more of a short-term addressing of an issue? This isn't putting in something in place long-term?
Well, it would, it depends what the proposal is. I mean, I guess you'd have to define long-term. I mean, it might be a program that lasts six months or three months. I mean, I don't know what would come in, but...
Long-term, I guess, yeah, multiple years or permanent.
Usually not multiple years, because the money doesn't last that long.
Okay. All right, I appreciate, appreciate the answers, Cheryl.
Yep.
Any further comments?
I would make a motion, DA, send their their vote to city council for final approval.
Second that.
Motion made by Weary, seconded by Alder Brunet.
It's a pretty important issue, and I think this is something the city council should should weigh in on. I mean, we can all see, you know, the effects of what's going on with COVID, and, I mean, heck, driving downtown, you drive by the park, right by the church, St. John's Park, and you're wondering, you know, people asking what the heck's going on down there, and obviously it needs to be addressed. So I think we need to stay on top of this and put our voices in as well. So I would hope this can come back so we can weigh in on it.
All right, we do have a motion and a second to send the the contract awardees, RFP awardees, back through council when those have been made. Additional comments from council? Alder Lefaven and Alder Dorf.
Yes, I just want to know, is this timely?
That's it.
Always going to say it's timely.
Well, it is, it's timely, it's homelessness and COVID, so we want to get the money out the door as fast as we can.
So to come back to the council would be when?
Well, the RDA meets on November 10th, so it would be the council meeting after that, I would suspect.
Do you think that that it can wait that long?
I I have faith that the RDA will make good decisions with the funding, but it, you know, you guys are the council members. If you want this to come back, that's your decision. Generally, block grant funds are, you approve the master plan for block grant, block grant and COVID block grant, you send that to the Redevelopment Authority, and then they run the programs based on your recommendations on these funding levels. That's been the SOP. Is it easier and faster for us to get the money out the door, for the RDA to approve it and not have to come back a week later for council? Yes, if that's what you're asking me.
Yeah, yeah. For the council itself, it's three weeks, and then it's not going to go right, then it takes a little bit after that, right?
Well, it'd be the first council meeting after the November 10th RDA meeting.
Right, yeah.
So...
Okay, thank you.
So that's not actually until early December, our next council meeting?
Yes, that one is December 1st, and the one after that is December 15th.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Jeffries. Alder Dorf.
Thank you. I I really feel I'm going to have to vote against this motion. I would invite the alders to come to RDA. I know that I am on RDA, so of course I'm going to be in the position of being able to vote on this, and and you you may not be, depending on how this ends up, but this is timely, and this is going to to stall the efforts to support members of our community that need help at this time. And Director Grenier, sorry, Renier Wig, Director Renier Wig, is there a time that the money has to be spent by, or it has to be encumbered or distributed by?
We don't have a deadline that would supersede this council meeting that we're talking about, but I guess the bottom line is we want the money out the door, right? As fast as we can, so it's providing services to homelessness.
Thank you. And so all of you are very welcome to come to the RDA meeting on on the 10th of November. You can zoom in on it, you can share your opinions, you can talk, you can be in closed session if we go into closed session. So I would ask that you vote against this if if you, and and instead come to the meeting and share your opinions there, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Alder Galvin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've been dealing with the issue at St. John's Park that Alder Weary referenced too, because I have a very cold, close frighten. He's been in communication with me since the spring about some of the ongoing problems there. I was at a meeting hosted by the Green Bay Police Department earlier this week. These funds, Director Renier Wig, if I understand correctly, these funds would be used to house homeless people who are unable to find a roof over their head, or because of COVID are unable to find a roof over their head. Is that correct?
Potentially. I mean, you could also apply for these funds for, you know, anything like cleaning supplies that could be essential services to homeless folks, whether it's food, could be shelter.
Okay. And and what I'm hearing at the meeting and in Commerce Department and some of the other NGOs that are involved with this, is that because of COVID especially, there isn't that much room at the end, unfortunately. And many of these individuals that are having to live out on the street, we've seen the photos on social media of some of the tents, we might, some of you, like I, have probably feel it, some complaints from concerned citizens. And what these funds do, it allows us to help these people transition off the street during the cold winter months that my brother's out in Minneapolis now this afternoon. It's coming, winter is coming, okay? And and the sooner we can get these individuals in a safe and secure place where they can get a roof, a bed, a meal, whatever services they need, or these organizations out there that are already caring for them can have these funds to help them with PPE and cleaning and and some of the other things that go along with this, the sooner the better. And and the RDA has been dealing with this already. So I'm, I understand the need for oversight. I do. But I I think at this point, we've already given our trust to the RDA to make this and how these funds prior to this have been spent, and I don't see a concern, at least I don't have a concern right now, that these funds would be misspent. I think all this is going to do is further what they've already been trying to do and get these individuals out of the cold and off the streets and allow some of these organizations that have been helping them to do so in a clean and safe manner. So I'm, I'm not really in favor of this either at this time. Thank you.
Dr. Gerlach.
Thank you. I'm inclined not to support this either for two reasons. One is that, as Alder Galvin just said, I'm really interested in, with winter approaching, getting homes for people as quickly as possible. And the other reason is that I have been attending the RDA meetings, and I have been so impressed with the thoughtfulness and the professionalism of that group that I really do trust them. I I say that with sincerity, but but I also am always concerned that I might be missing something in making a decision, and I just wondered if I might ask, why would, this would probably be a question of Alder Weary, if I would be allowed to do that. I don't understand why he would want it to come back to the council. What would, what is the concern? May I ask?
Alder Weary.
Well, certainly. I think, as we all know, RDA, of course, meets during the day, and those of us who are still working, unless you spend vacation, you're not really going to make an RDA meeting, and that's unfortunate. And I've always said they should meet at night, maybe something, Mr. Mayor, you could consider, get more participation from the public. For something as big of an issue as this, I mean, we've debated different homeless programs since I've been on council, almost 20 years now, and some are good ideas, some are bad ideas, and everybody in our district has a good, has an idea on on it. It's such an important decision, I don't want to give up my vote to pretty much a board of unelected people, as well-meaning and as good as they may be. This is something I want to vote on, that's all.
Thank you.
Alder Gerlach, any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from council on the motion?
Oh.
Alder Brunet, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. For the council members who may be on the fence, you know, regarding the timing, that would be my big concern, the timing. If RDA meets first few weeks of November, and the next council meeting is December 1st or whatever the mayor mentioned, I could see that that would be a big deterrent to voting below RDA. So as city council president, I just want you all to know that I would authorize an emergency meeting if if that's something that that would be be necessary amongst this group. Because I agree, we we need, the homeless need, that any help that they can get, any organization that can assist, you know, should get the funding as quick as possible. And it's not so much that we don't trust the RDA, they are, in fact, mostly unelected. And not that that means that they're not, they don't have a devotion to the public like we do, because that's not true, but a lot of times when we hear a lot of the community conversations regarding homelessness and struggles that we have within our districts, I think we all could lend, you know, very good oversight to how the funds are being spent so that we can ensure that that all people in the community who we may have personal, you know, interactions or have knowledge of, that they, in fact, are also considered. So I could, I could see this going either way, quite frankly, but but I want to get the money in the hands of qualified organizations to assist as many people as possible, as quickly as possible. I do respect the desire for oversight oversight as well. So thank you, those are my comments.
Thanks, Alder. Any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, I believe there's someone from the public would like to speak, so I'd like to make a motion to open the floor.
Second.
Alder Scannell makes motion to open the floor. It's been, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open.
I'd like to speak, David Bartikowski. Do I need to do my address once again?
Yes, please.
All right, that's 2697 Bay Settlement Road, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54311. This is very close and dear to my heart. I was on the Green Bay Homeless Task Force for a number of years, trying to get the MICA Center open, and we had succeeded to get a daytime resource center open. But I'm going to give you an example here. A couple of months ago, it was a very cold evening, and I ran into a gentleman on the river walk, and he's wearing shorts, and it was probably 35, 40 degrees, I think, and this could have been even six months ago, I don't remember the reference, but I ran into this person, and he was sitting on a bench, and it was extremely cold, and he was in shorts. So I went on my walk, came back, and because I have a very, I'm very opinionated when it comes to homeless, I'm very proactive, I stopped, and I said, you know, where are you going tonight? He said, I have nowhere to go. So I said, well, hold off, and I'm going to take you somewhere for the evening. This was back in, I think it was back in April, or, yeah, I think it was April, because it was still pretty cold out. And there was a police officer coming my way, and I flagged him down, and he totally ignored me and kept on going. me and kept on going. So I went and got my vehicle, came back to get Jonathan and drove him over to the St. John's Homeless Shelter. And they had turned him away because of the COVID. And I had no other resources. I wasn't going to let him sit out there and freeze. They handed, although they did, they did hand him some blankets to cover himself with and sleep outside with, but I didn't think that was quite adequate. And it's not adequate. So I took him over to the Cherry Motel and I paid for three nights and gave him some money for food and he was very appreciative, but that was just a temporary arrangement there. And I've experienced this day in and day out, this homeless issue. And I think it's important that we get funding quickly. I think it's, I think history is going to judge us on how we actually treat each other and take care of each other. And that's very clear that we need to make these, these important decisions and make them quickly. And, you know, money is frivolously spent on a lot of things in other areas as well, not only, you know, in government, but privately as well, businesses and such. You know, accounting for every dime and nickel, I think, is short-sighted. I think we need to approve this immediately. We are in a, we are in a very difficult time in the history of our country here. We are dealing with a pandemic. We are dealing with homelessness. I see, I only got two seconds left here. But I think it's extremely important that we make, we make the right decisions at the right time and not continue to delay these things. It's very important that we, like I said, that we're actually judged on how we take care of each other. That's how, that's how they're going to judge society.
Thank you, Mr. Bartikovsky. I appreciate, we appreciate that. Thank you so much. Mayor, next we have Kelly, who would like to speak. I believe Kelly had spoken before.
I had. Thank you. Kelly Delvo, 716 Chapelview Road in Green Bay. I have been to the park that was mentioned across from St. John's. I and several friends of mine brought supplies down one day and returned later with a hot meal that someone had prepared, blankets. There is a crisis down there. There was a woman down there who is diabetic and had no way to get to the pharmacy to pick up her insulin, which is a life crisis. Without the proper medication, she could die. There were probably between that place and under the viaduct where the tents are, at least 20 people. And because of COVID, they have no place to go. And with the temperatures dropping the way they are, the longer this is delayed, people are going to have catastrophic health issues if we wait. It's not an issue that's going away. I trust these nonprofits and services in our community that do this on a daily basis to make the right decisions. These are not people who are going to frivolously spend the money. They are there with a purpose. They are there to help these people in our community. There's also issues with mental health down there. There are definitely some people who are mentally ill and could use the services. And I've worked in that field and I am able to recognize the signs and symptoms. And I have, I have concerns with the safety of all the people down there with regard to sexual assault, with regard to hunger, the temperatures, COVID. There's so many issues. And if we can't trust the people in our community who have taken this up as something they are passionate about, then that says a lot about our community. And I agree with what the gentleman said before me. How we take care of the most vulnerable people in our society speaks to who we as a community. And these people need our help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delvo. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the council on this matter? Please.
Yeah, I'd like to speak, please.
Yes, please state your name and address for the committee, for the council.
Jerry Bigelow, 1216 Buchanan Street. On this homeless thing right now, the landlords cannot do evictions between now and the first of the year. So I'm predicting around January 15th to February 15th, you're going to have hundreds of people to deal with, hundreds, just in those six, seven weeks. You know, speaking personally, you know, I know, I know quite a few that are going to have to leave and they're not going to be able to get places. So yeah, I'm going to have a real big problem between January and February when they can do the evictions. Because when, when they said they didn't have to pay their rent, a lot of people take it literally, you know? That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this matter? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council. Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Motion to close the floor.
Second. Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer, close the floor. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, can I make a comment? Did you recognize me? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yep, I did.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that I got a number today because I know we're talking about, you know, it seems like homeless individuals right now, but according to the Green Bay School District, we have 42 families that are in hotels right now and 10 families that are unsheltered through the district. So these monies are not just for folks that are assisting individuals. I mean, agencies that are helping families as well are going to be applying for these dollars, number one. And number two, I just want the council to know that we fully vet these organizations out when we run through the proposals that we receive. You know, they have to meet the requirements that HUD provides for us. And we make sure that, you know, we're investing money in programs that are going to work. So, thank you. Just wanted to say that.
Director, and I would just, you know, mention, as Director Reiner Wig said previously, these organizations obviously have to be providing services in the Green Bay community, Green Bay proper. But in addition to that, I mean, we would expect the, you know, the well-known providers to step up and request assistance here. So the New Community Shelters of the World, of course, the St. John's, New Cap has been very active recently, you know, Transformation House has been very helpful. So I think, you know, like I said, it's kind of a tried and true group of providers who are going to be able to put these, these funds to use. But I noticed that Alder Steyer had his hand.
Do I have the floor? Do I?
Oh. Go ahead.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I raised my hand. Alder Scannell, I don't know.
Well, Alder Steyer, identify me.
Yep, Alder Steyer.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. The comments that Mr. Bartikovsky made are spot on. I was with David on the committee for several years, you know, trying to get this resource center. And some of the roadblocks that we hit were amazing. You know, Alder Burnett was also involved in that. So, you know, if you go on a homeless count, that I did a couple of times, you know, it kind of opens your eyes as far as who has and who has not. You know, I appreciate Alder Weary bringing up this, you know, as far as being transparent and such, and we need to weigh in. But I think the timing, as Alder Burnett said, is best right now. So I mimic or go along with what Mr. Bartikovsky said. That was spot on. And I agree with that and I will not support this as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Yes, just, we routinely make decisions and then staff carries them out or whoever. I mean, that's pretty much the norm, actually. It's not so much oversight. I see this as micromanaging and I just don't see the need for it. And especially on this issue, it is very timely. So I also don't.
Mayor, I'd like to make one comment.
Alder Vanderlees.
Alder Vanderlees.
Yes, go ahead.
I recommend that we spend the money, let them spend the money and, you know, help the homeless, help the people that need it. And I, I think I would just solve the problem would be that after they've, you know, used up the $136,000, it's not that much money, just kind of let the council know what it was, what it was actually used for. And that way we can, we can have a, an informational part of it of what the money was spent for. And I think that'd be a very simple solution. And, you know, whatever we can do to help the people right now, let's get it done and, you know, give us a little update, what the money was actually allocated for. And that would be sufficient for me. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. Any final comments?
Mr. Mayor.
With that, we have a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Alder Weary, for a second time.
I appreciate all the comments by everybody and I'm going to withdraw my motion, I think, on this one. With all that's going on, this is something we can, we can get a report after and just move, move ahead with this one. We have enough other things to worry about.
Okay. Thank you, Alder Weary. So with that, we do have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Improvement in Services. Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens to approve Report M, which is the reported improvement in services committee from the meeting on October 14, 2020. Any items to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Protection and Policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens to approve Report N, which is the reported protection and policy committee from the meeting on October 12, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlock, Alder Steyer.
Yeah, I'd like to abstain from Scott Fanatastein as far as I know who he is. So I would abstain from that. Thank you.
Very good. That is noted. Any other abstentions? Any names to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of the report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it. Report has been approved, noting that abstention. Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve Report P, which is the report of the Plan Commission from the meeting on October 12, 2020. Any items to be handled separately?
Number two.
Number, ber, what number is it?
Number two.
And number six. Thank you.
And six. Any others? Items two and six will be handled separately. Hearing none, others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items two and six. Your wish is on item two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlock. This item was pulled by a couple of Alders, but I'm going to go to Alder Corpus Dax, as she is a member of the Plan Commission.
Yes, I would like to make, to make a motion to send this back to Planning Commission due to submissions of additional information that were not presented at last week's Planning Commission.
Second.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion to refer back, made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any further comments?
Question, if I could, Mayor. Yeah, I'm fairly familiar with this based on watching the meetings and whatnot. If we refer this back, I don't know who could answer this, but will it impact this person's business at all? Is it going to be harmed in the short term?
Yeah, just once, yeah, that's a good question. Director Reiner Wig, either you or, or Mr. Buck?
Yes, I think Dave Buck is with me tonight. If you can, I don't know if he can answer that question, but.
Right. Mr. Buck, if you could just speak to, to why we would want to refer this back at this time?
Sure. We did receive some additional information that the Plan Commission was not privy to, that staff believes is relevant to the, to the petition. As far as impacting the business, this is a conditional use permit request. So they are currently operating a material recovery business. This is to expand that use into a new use. So though I can't speak for them, I, I don't believe it would impact their business, business model to hold it.
Okay. Thank you.
I would also like to add that part of our, one of the conditions that was added last week was that the CUP couldn't be used until all of the conditions have been met. So it wouldn't be impacting anything already standing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So we do have a motion and a second to refer this back to committee. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. The item has been referred back to the Plan Commission. Item six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve. The item was pulled by Alder Corpus Dax. You have the floor.
This one, I make a motion to hold for 90 days to allow the applicant time to address easement and ordinance questions that were brought up at last night's zoning board meeting.
Second.
Second.
Has been made to hold for 90 days by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any comments from the department necessary on this? We have someone from the public.
David Buck, I mean, that would be okay for the 90-day hold, I think, right?
Sure, the 90, again, I don't know if it'll affect the petitioner at all, but an 90-day hold would be fine. This is a multifaceted petition that needs both the conditional use approval for the use itself and some dimensional regulation variances from the Board of Appeals. So it is multifaceted.
Could this come back sooner if those were, if those issues were worked out? Or would it have to be held for 90 days?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking David as a planner or Vanessa, is there, if you hold it for 90, let's say they, everybody works things out before 90 days. I mean, we wouldn't want to hold that up longer, would we? Or?
You can, if the intent is to just do it until they actually get those items rectified, you can hold for 90 days and bring it back sooner if, if it's ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alder LeFave.
There is, I know there's one person for sure that wants to speak on this item. Could we open the floor?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to open the floor. Second.
Second.
LeFave, seconded by Alder Steyer to open the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is, go ahead. Well, you can go first. Go on.
Jerry Bigelow, 1216 Buchanan. I own some of the property alongside of it. And I've been listening to the meetings and been trying to communicate with people. And I tell them there's a six-foot fence in a 10-foot hole. I tell them they're putting a six-foot fence for a 30-foot pile of stuff. This Steve Garner.
Ron. Mr. Bigelow?
Yes.
We're not, we're discussing a different item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Mr. Bartikovsky?
Yes. I'm going to need more than three minutes to present my case on this. Shut the door there. It's getting noisy out there. Sorry. So I'm going to need three minutes to present my case here and give you a little history about myself. So I'm.
Excuse me, a point of order? I mean, the motion is to hold, so comments should be on holding it. Anything else should be taken up when it shows up at those various commissions and?
Yeah, but I, but I think it's important that the, the council here understands that I was never informed that there was any of this going on and I'm literally 10 feet away from the applicant.
And I appreciate that. And your comments are not saying that your comments aren't valid, but the motion, if we were taking this item up, all your comments would be pertinent. be pertinent. But we're not taking this item up, we're holding it, so that's what we should all be directing our comments to, even though.
Alder Scanell's comments are well, well taken by the chair, so, Mr. Bartikowski, just, you know, make your comments direct to the motion.
Uh, well, uh, no, that's fine for 90 days.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could, did Mr. Bartikowski have a, a question? Perhaps your comments, Mr. Bartikowski, would be related that you wouldn't want it held, that you would actually maybe want it approved or denied tonight, and then it would be quite appropriate to hear those comments.
That's what I was hoping.
All right, you're perfectly within your right, and don't let anybody tell you otherwise. So, I'd be perfectly fine to hear from you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, that would be my, uh, my preferred, uh, preference would be to be heard tonight, and a vote tonight on this, because this is my third, this is my third meeting. Uh, I, I've been with planning, I've been with variance, which kicked.
You have the right to speak tonight. Mr. Bartikowski, um, just keep it to three minutes.
Okay, and it was, uh, it was punted to you from variance, and I was hoping we'd have some, uh, conclusion to this. I did, uh, I was not notified of this, uh, I didn't know until an hour ahead of the meeting at the Planning Commission that this was even going down. I want everybody to understand this and be on record. Um, I haven't had time to get an attorney, but I did finally, uh, and he wasn't able to make it tonight, but Chris Paul, uh, with Metzler, uh, Tim and, uh, Travers, I think that's how you pronounce it, hopefully I didn't mess that up. But I have pictures I wanted to submit tonight, uh, and I was told, uh, by Chief of Staff, Ms. Salston Jeffries, that I could not submit them.
What?
That it was too late to submit those. And, uh, so I have printed out stuff that I wanted to show you regarding this, and showing you that there are certain spots with the, uh, with the easement that is actually seven feet, nine inches wide, um, which I think is very relevant. I do have a letter, uh, I do have a letter, I can read this to you, boy, I feel really rushed here. But I do have a letter, uh, pertaining, uh, um, an easement, Moyers and Malian, difference Malian, Gordon Malian, Main Street. Are you aware we have had the property line between a survey, the four-foot wide assessment, two feet on either side of the common line, is for the benefit of both parties? Therefore, we'd like to see the four-foot easement kept clear. We intend to exercise our rights to the easement and improve the side, uh, and improve the side of the building, and would appreciate anything in the easement removed by that date. And this was dated, uh, August 5th, 1987. Uh, I realize that, uh, something passed recently that easements, uh, will go 40 years, well, from this day, and it's, and I did request deeds requesting this as well, so I'm going to need a little time before I get all of those, and, uh, negotiate things with my attorney. But I was hoping that I'd be able to, uh, sufficiently, uh, present this to you, uh, this evening, and there would be a, a vote on this, and, uh, put to, put to rest. And, uh, that's it. Thank you very much, uh, uh, Your Honor and the council members and Chief of Staff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments from the public?
I have one for Mr. Bartikowski, a question.
Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bartikowski, is it, um, your concerns centered around not having room to maintain or improve your building, and maybe possible damage from cars going through there?
Well, that's correct. I, I do have a, I do have a brick building, uh, that was built in 1892, and, uh, am I going to stop this drive-through when I put ladders up, or scissors left to do tuck pointing in that area? Uh, walking, you're talking a very small, narrow corridor there. Uh, the building is old, it's fragile. Um, it was built, like I said, in, uh, 1892. I have, uh, I have, uh, glass windows along, those pictures I was going to show you, and hopefully I can present those. But I do have windows along the, the ground floor there, that leads into the rock basement. I have a rock basement. This is a very old building that I'm restoring, I'm in the process of restoring that. I'm investing $40,000 into tuck pointing the outside. Uh, I've made many improvements to it. Um, yeah, I'm very concerned, and it's extremely dangerous and tight there, especially the turn off to the left, which goes, I have pictures to show you that, that's, uh, that's 7.9 inches right there. And my truck that I drive is eight, eight feet wide. And, uh, uh, but yeah, I think, I think it's going to inhibit a lot of my, uh, improvement, uh, of that building and maintaining it throughout the years.
I appreciate it.
I believe the applicant is also here tonight. Garrett, are you, Mr. Bader, are you here?
I'm here as an appropriate speaker now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Per the original request to hold, things are changing in flew with this submittal, which is why what is being sought will probably change. Respectfully, any discussion on that is not really warranted at this time until we really know what's going to happen there. Hence why the request for a 90-day delay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask, um, Mr. Bader a question, please?
Go ahead, Alder.
Um, Mr. Bader, did you, you had a survey done, and I want to know how that survey was done. As I did see the plat for the properties, and according to, I did talk to David Buck, and he said that according to your survey, it shows that your property goes all the way up to the building, Mr. Budakowski's building. And if you look at the plat, that's not true. There's two, 2.43 feet to your property line, and then there's that, uh, walking easement, two feet on Mr. Budakowski's lot, and two feet on yours. So if you did look at that, the, and that's, I mean, the commission did not see that, I believe, that was not presented. Um, that pretty much limit for your vehicles to go through that, that, um, on your property. That leaves you less than eight feet. And I was told that a parking spot is eight feet. No, sometimes opening your doors in eight feet, if you have another car, trying to open their door, you have to let one, one of you can only open your door at one time. So I want to know, has now this has come to light, that this would completely change your ideas for putting your drive-through?
With all due respect, it does not change ideas, but there are other aspects that may change things. Hence, again, respectfully, it is prudent to wait until the issue is formally better understood until commenting further. Hence why no action is being requested of me tonight. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Oh, she need to close the floor?
Can I speak? I had my hand up.
You've made your comment, sir. We're going to close the floor. Additional speakers.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Dorf.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scanell. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the floor is closed. Alder Steyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I sat in both at the Plan Commission and also at the Board of Appeals. Um, the Board of Appeals did not rule on it, and there were two conditional uses that were brought forward on this issue. One was for, for the fire department with safety issues, and the other was okay from the Board of Appeals. They declined to vote on this. They, they decided to hold off till their next Board of Appeals meeting. So, you know, in a sense, um, you know, both Mr. Bartikowski and Mr. Bader are correct in their stances, but I think, I think we need to look at it a little further. So, like I said, it'd be very easy to vote it down now, but a lot of us haven't had a chance to look at any minor changes or anything that have come forward since then. So, you know, I, I mean, I couldn't, I have my gut feeling how I want to vote, but I don't think it would be, uh, done in the best of matters. So I, I think at this time, you know, we're just looking to bring, you know, delay this until we have the further information. So, I'm, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
Mayor Gennert, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Alder.
Uh, I think we should wait the 90 days. Uh, they haven't vetted this properly, and, and it sounds like they need the time to, to regroup and, and get all the information properly addressed. So, I, I recommend that we wait. We shouldn't rush this through. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments on the motion?
One last one.
Yep, go ahead, Alder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for myself, I've also, you know, watched meetings and read the material, and, and I went out to the property and, and walked it to see what it would look like visually. And, uh, for me, I'm, I'm fine with not holding this and voting it down tonight. I can't, you know, how this proposal would work, so that's just my plan. I'm going to vote no, and then, uh, hopefully vote through this, uh, to not. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. So we do have a motion and a second, uh, to delay for 90 days unless the conditions are met sooner. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay?
No.
The ayes have it?
No.
If I could have the record reflected, I need to abstain because Mr. Bader is a member of my executive committee.
So, uh, so with that, that motion is successful, and we're on to the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve, to approve.
Motion made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve Report Q, which is a report of the Finance Committee from the meeting on October 13, 2020. Any items to be handled separately?
Six.
Any others? All right, hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved, with the exception of items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. The item was pulled by Alder Johnson. Alder, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I wanted to have the opportunity to vote no on this. I voted no at the committee level. I want to do so here as well, largely in part because I do think that we received proposals from other qualified organizations, um, at a lower rate, and I think it is, you know, trying to figure out how we can save money. Um, for, for fiscal reasons, I just wanted to have the opportunity to vote no on this.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, Director Ellen Becker, you want to just address the Alder's comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, we went through a full RFP process for this, um, for this bid, um, for this, for this service. And, um, based on the numbers, before we saw any costs, um, the proposed winner, which was Baker Tilly, um, did come out with many more points when the costs got added. Um, they were the more expensive one, but in total, their total points came out, and we're the most qualified, um, had the highest points for, after we went through the full RFP.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Director, uh, yes, Alder LaFave, go ahead.
Uh, yes, and this was discussed at the water utility, and they agreed that, uh, Baker Tilly was the best, um, because of these points.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Dorf?
Yes, and so there was certainly more to it than just the cost of, of what this would involve. Um, we are working with two other, what are the, Diana, what are the two other agencies that if they come on board with us?
There was Clifton Law, Lawton, which is our CLA, which is our current vendor, and then there was also.
No, I mean, the two other agencies that were going to be audited.
Thank you, I apologize. Yep, Chris, um, Green Bay Water Utility and Green Bay Metro, we're also looking in our, we're in on the same bid, correct?
Right. And so, and I understand why, why, um, Alder Johnson voted no, the rest, the other three of us voted yes, and we, we did understand that there was a difference in cost, and also in service, and in reputation of, of the places that they had had more experience with a city of the size of ours. So that was a reason that I voted yes on it. So I wanted to ensure that the other Alders who didn't get a chance to watch the meeting knew that there, there were two sides, and I understand why Alder Johnson voted no, and I wanted you to know why I voted yes. Thank you.
Alder, any other comments? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to award the contract. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, and the motion is successful. On to Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scanell to approve Report R, which is the report of the Park Committee from the meeting on October 14, 2020. Any items to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Personnel.
Motion to approve.
Made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. On to EDA.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax to approve Report T, which is the report of the Economic Development Authority from the meeting on October 5th, 2020. Any comments?
Abstain. Mr. Bader is on my executive committee.
That is noted, Alder. Hearing other comments, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? The ayes have it. Report has been approved. On to Committee of the Whole.
Move to approve.
Second.
So we will take these one by one, Alder, though I appreciate the motion. Um, so item, consideration with possible action on the request to fill the following replacement positions and all subsequent vacancies resulting from internal transfers. It's a custodian two, and a building services coordinator. Any discussion on this item? Alder Galvin, go ahead.
I'm just wondering why this thing come up in personnel.
Yep, very good question. Uh, we will go to Director Folds.
I, I can actually answer that.
Director Rainier Wig, go ahead.
Um, it, because they, they received the notices from these staff people the day of Personnel Committee, so we wouldn't have had time to properly notice it. And these are two, these are two maintenance positions for our public housing units in Green Bay, so we will have no maintenance people after November 10th. So that's why we're trying to move these along quickly to fill these positions.
All right, that, that satisfies me. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor approving that item, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? The ayes have it, the item has been approved. On to item U2, consideration with possible action on prohibiting weapons, including firearms, in any part of a building that is owned, occupied, or controlled by the city while being used for in-person polling locations and for central count.
Move to approve. Second. Second.
Seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. And we, um, first, we're going to go to the Clerk, Clerk Teskey. Item is before us this evening, and then, um, probably some subsequent comments from Chief Smith. Our Teskey.
So I brought this forward because I have been asked by some of the poll workers, um, if we could not have any weapons or firearms in polling locations on Election Day.
And in, in order to make that prohibition, we received guidance from, was it WEC Clerk Teskey?
Yes, we did.
Stating that the common council would need to adopt this resolution, correct?
Correct.
So that's why we have it before us tonight. Um, Chief Smith, any comments on the policy itself for us?
The concerns that I've been hearing from members of the community are that they're, uh, that individuals might come from outside, trying to disrupt the election, or bring weapons to try and intimidate people from voting. During the August election, uh, I went to the various polling locations, and I did go to the one, uh, the Sears Building that we were using down there on Mason Street. While I was there, I was approached by several poll workers who said they were in fear or intimidated earlier by an individual who had a, a firearm open carried, um, affixed to their waist. Um, I called the city attorney and asked if there was anything we could do in a situation like that. I was advised that because there was no ordinance, or nor rule prohibiting people from carrying guns into that building, there was nothing we can do. So that was my experience. I know I have heard some concerns from people in the community, that this is a very emotional and very contentious election, and, um, I, that was evidenced this morning when I went to City Hall and talked to some of the folks that were in line there. Uh, there were definitely some people that were very angry and very emotional in that line. So, um, that's kind of the perspective I have. Of course, it's entirely up to the City Council to make this decision.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor?
What are the comments from councils? Yeah, just remember to press your buttons, I'm monitoring that as closely as I can, Alder.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I think this is, this is a special situation. Um, people have a right. People have a right, yes, as their Second Amendment with the firearms, but this is a special situation here with the polling. And as the Chief had mentioned and others, that this is a very volatile time. We've had people, well, just what happened to the Michigan Governor. People are getting so over rough on this election that I'm just afraid, yes, that something might happen and that we need to put some kind of control on this. And I'm hoping that, I don't know if we will need the police at some of these polling stations, I don't know. This is becoming really scary. So I am definitely going to vote for this. I don't, I'm not against people having their guns, but there's certain times when you don't need to have your gun. This is one of them. Thank you.
Alder, Alder Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm curious, we're looking at just restricting within a building. Is there a reason why we didn't go for the property? I mean, I think if we have people with weapons outside, right outside the doors, that would be just as the reason why we're just saying restrict it to within the building?
Yeah, probably a question for law, so either Attorney Chavez or if Attorney Mather is on the call.
This is Attorney Chavez. So there's a couple of reasons why we are unable to do that. So first and foremost, what the authority that we're granted by statute actually applies specifically to buildings. The second component of that is parking lots. But what ultimately determined and reviewing different laws and authorities pertaining to carry is that you have to still give people an option to be able to put weapons away somewhere so that they're not bringing it into the building, that's the main focus. So while there is definitely a potential for concern for people being out on the ground, we don't have the authority at this time under state statute to limit it to, to limit the parking lots themselves or to limit grounds themselves either. And so what we're doing right now, or what we're proposing right now, is to address what authority is actually available to the city.
Thank you, that answers it, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin.
Your Honor, and my question or concern was answered with Alder Scannell's question. I guess my main concern is if we do vote in favor of this and it's restricted at the buildings, we're talking concealed or not concealed, is that correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
All right. And then I guess I would ask that if this does pass, that we have very visible signs outside of the entrances to all these buildings that we say to make it very obvious, because there's some people that go armed quite a bit and they may forget, so I don't want anyone to run any problems. But my, I guess my concern, because this would probably be more for Attorney Chavez, because I've already talked to the Chief about my concerns, is that, so from what you're saying is if someone wanted to go and dress up with a tactical vest and some kind of a long gun and all that other kind of stuff, I don't think we can do to stop them from doing that, is that correct?
It depends on what they're doing. So unauthorized militias are still prohibited by law and under the Constitution. And so if somebody is appearing as an unauthorized militia, that is definitely something we can, we can address those existing laws. Now, if somebody is just wearing a tactical vest under something that looks normal available, but we do have intimidation factors that we are trying to work on containing as well. And so there is additional guidance that should be coming out from the WEC. But the, as far as prohibiting carry in the buildings themselves, this is the only way to do it.
All right, because as I understood from an article that I read today, the only legal militia in the state of Wisconsin would be the National Guard. Anyone else identifying themselves as a militia would be in violation of state statute, except if someone's smart, they just say, I'm not part of the militia, I'm just John Doe standing here with my tactical vest, helmet, and long gun. And if people are claiming that they feel intimidated by that, there's really, as I understand it, not much we could do.
And we are waiting for additional guidance from the WEC to.
All right. All right, I think that addresses most of my concerns, and I guess since I'm a poll worker, I'm even more concerned about this. I guess part of my concern is if someone does walk into the building armed, are we setting up a procedure or something with what to do and how to handle it?
Yes, as far as my understanding is, is that there are, the intention is to have something in place, I would defer to the Chief, but the recommendations that are coming out of the WEC are focused on providing something for people to, to address that, whether it's having non-uniformed officers in the vicinity or having somebody close by to address that this way. It's not an altercation, it doesn't escalate to an altercation.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
It's Alder. Alder Dorf.
Thank you, I know that there are some people here from the public, I understand that there are that would like to speak. Would it be appropriate to open the floor at this time?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to move to open the floor.
Second.
Made to open the floor by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Galvin, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, the ayes have it, the floor is open.
Yes, Ms. Paulson, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the committee.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Paulson and I live at 2550 Martha Avenue, 54301. Thank you so much for putting together this resolution. I am the local group lead for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America here in Green Bay. And I think this is a really, a really smart thing to do at this time when tensions are so high. It won't sell everything, but I think it's a really good step in the right direction. You know, we want to support creating a safe environment for democracy that allows anyone, regardless of their beliefs, to vote for the candidate of their choice without fear. And you know, some people are perfectly fine with them, but some people really don't react well to open guns and it's intimidating. And if I were there with my son, I'd probably just turn around and leave because it's such a, to me, it's such a risky thing to have around. So I definitely support prohibiting firearms at polling locations and at government buildings on Election Day. And just for what it's worth, if more guns made Americans safer, America would be the tree on earth instead of having 100 people a day die from gun violence. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paulson. Ms. Ringel, please unmute yourself and state your name and address again for the committee. Ms. Ringel?
Okay, there we go, sorry, I can't push buttons apparently. Abby Ringel, 2042 Memorial Drive. I would just like to express my concerns that stating that we can't take our guns to a polling place actually makes me feel less safe as a holder of my CCW. I carry that for protection. And as Chief Smith said, you know, there are individuals that, you know, are having guns and are very uptight about this election and are very passionate about it. And if those individuals show up with their weapons and they decide to intimidate and ultimately draw their weapon on me, I don't feel comfortable going to a voting place without being able to protect myself, as is my First Amendment right to, and in Wisconsin, we do have that right to open carry. So I would just like to express my concern there that, you know, I think we're opening, we're opening up a can of worms by saying that, especially since you can only limit it in a building and not on the property per se. So you're, you've got a whole can of worms that you're opening there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ringel. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the committee about this matter? Teresa Kennedy, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Hi, I'm Teresa Kennedy at 1301 Emily Street. And this really is just in response to the last caller, although I appreciate her point of view. I am a poll worker and I feel if she feels unsafe standing in line outdoors because we can't, because as I understand from the earlier discussion, that we wouldn't be able to limit the carrying of weapons outside of the building, but only inside the building, then perhaps she should take advantage of early voting in person at her municipality's area. But again, as a poll worker, these, these, I'm already scared enough of COVID. I, of somebody becoming unhinged, honestly. And perhaps taking out frustrations inside a polling center. And that's really all I have to say. It sounds like a lot of the Aldermen that have been commenting are in favor of this, and I appreciate that so much because protecting our right to vote is the number one reason why I have become a poll worker. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kennedy. Kelly?
Thank you. I have very mixed feelings on this for multiple reasons. I do open carry. I did not start open carrying until this past summer when I was participating in some of the peaceful protests and the anger that came at our group. I've never drawn my weapon, however, having it there has been a deterrent at times. And so I guess I have very mixed feelings, especially with the parking lot and walking in and out of a polling place. I understand I do have the right to vote early in person. However, I do have to agree with Ms. Ringel that I think it's opening a really big can of worms. And it's not that those of us who open carry would necessarily become unhinged. We, I think, are more worried about those who are claiming to be patriots and showing up with long guns and the tactical vests. Those are the concerns that I have. So I feel for you with this decision because I think it's a double-edged sword in many ways. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hutchinson, if you'd like to state your name and address for the committee? Sorry, for the council?
That's okay. I'm Denise Gummer-Hutchison, I live at 3184 Herman's Road, 54229. I am here tonight as a poll worker and I was actually at the Sears, the first person greeting people and welcoming them to the polling place in the August election. And I was also at the Sears, excuse me, at West High School in April. And I have thought a lot about this because it was, it was very uncomfortable to me when two different gentlemen came in with guns on their hips when they came in to vote. And it created a really uncomfortable energy for everybody working. And one of the gentlemen had to register to vote and he got rather agitated because there were some issues and he had to go back to his car and and it could have escalated, it did not escalate, except for he got a little angry and the person working the registration was able to hold it and take care of it. But we shouldn't be in kinds of situations where we're fearful for our lives and we're fearful for the people coming to the polls. And this is one day out of the year. And it is, one, one day, not out of the year, but one time in our election process. And I would just encourage all of you to support the poll workers and support democracy and support people being able to come and feeling safe and secure when they come to their polling locations and knowing, and also those of us who are working those polling locations, that we are not going to be injured or hurt or potentially killed. And I'm also here as a member of the League of Women Voters, who has worked over 100 years to make sure that people have the right to vote, specifically women have the right to vote. And I would encourage you to take that into consideration, that our minority communities and women have worked very hard to get to the point where it's okay to go and vote, and I don't want to see anything hurt that opportunity to happen in this situation. So please, vote to eliminate guns at the polling place on this election. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Hi, my name is Christine Seidel. My address is 1222 Hasting Street. And I am a poll worker also. And I just want to alert everyone to the fact that it is a felony to intimidate voters. And anyone who brings a weapon to a polling place is actively intimidating voters. I can't think of any other reason why you would bring a weapon. I don't think that you go to vote and have to fear for your life. And I also think that the council should really consider the poll workers and what we are doing as a service to the community and to the nation. And I would really want respect for our lives and also for the right to vote and all those people who are coming to vote. And I do think that if anyone has any sense about being afraid to go to the poll place and they have to bring a gun in order to exercise their right to vote, that there are lots of ways to vote early and to take advantage of all of those opportunities to vote. And, and not feel that, I really just don't think that we need to be in a position where we are having to fear for exercising our rights in this country, in this democracy. So thank you to the council for putting together this resolution. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Seidel. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
My name is Joyce Fritz and I too am a poll worker. I live at 822 South Clay Street in Green Bay. And the polling place where I normally work is Union Congregational Church. And that polling place is not going to be used this time. But that church has a sign on the door that says no guns are allowed. So we've already had that protection at a number of our polling places. And I urge you to pass this resolution and give us that additional protection with the change of venues for many of the polling places. I do not feel protected by a civilian with a gun. And I feel that poll workers and voters alike deserve to have that ease of guns not being allowed in the polling place. So thank you for proposing this resolution and I do urge you all to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Luann Crowder, I live at 818 South Roosevelt Street. My husband Jim Wall and I are going to be city poll workers in November. It's difficult enough that voters are not required to wear masks, but the thought that they might also be armed with deadly weapons is chilling. In your considerations, please consider the safety of all concerned. A weapon that is not present cannot be used against anyone. This election is already so fraught with emotions. Please vote to ban weapons and keep voters and poll workers safe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Crowder. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council. Anyone else? Okay, Mayor.
Motion to close the floor.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens to close the floor. On the favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 If you guys have it, the floor is closed. Alder Burnett is in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. I have questions for staff, just so they're ready. Clerk Teskey, Chief Smith, and Attorney Chavez. First for Clerk Teskey, you said poll workers have asked for this change. How many poll workers have asked for this resolution be passed or something similar to it?
I've had probably four that have either had arguments taking place like in August at the polling locations, and they were concerned. I did have Denise contact me about a month ago, and that's when I got the ball rolling with the city attorney. And then some of the other workers have commented that they're worried about their safety. So probably more than four, because when I think of the safety question, I'm getting those now since the assignments have been sent out.
Prior to the August election, have we had any issues or concerns from poll workers or the general public about people carrying firearms, whether concealed or at their side?
Yes, I've been, I've been questioned many times by poll workers, are they allowed to have guns and bring them in? And they do feel intimidated.
How many ti, I mean, just ballpark, like, how many times per year does that come up?
Every big election, a question comes up.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Teskey. For Chief Smith, you mentioned you were outside of City Hall when people were waiting in line, and you said that people were agitated, voters were agitated. But what were they agitated about? Did they give any indication of what their grievances were?
A couple things. One, several people mentioned that they were agitated by having to wait in line. There was a period of time there, and early in the day, they had a big crowd, and they were agitated about that. But I heard some people make comments. One woman was agitated about, and she specifically cited Clarence Thomas as the culprit in whatever issue she had with the court. I would say that would be the type of interactions I had with folks out there.
How many interactions?
I probably talked to 50 people out there, and most of it was just hello. And others were concerned that they weren't going to be able to, they were going to get a parking citation because they had to wait so long, that they were parked at a meter and things of that nature. So I would say I probably talked to 50 people out there over the course of two or three visits to the polling location.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Attorney Chavez, the, if a person does not, perhaps this might be a question for Chief Smith, I don't know. But if a person does not comply, they have a sidearm and, you know, holstered, and they come in to vote, and our officer or poll worker whoever's at the door says, ma'am, or sir, you cannot bring that in here. And if they refuse, then what?
My suggestion, I'm sorry, go ahead, Teskey.
No, I was saying, I just heard you.
Okay, from my perspective, we'll have officers on duty. They'll be briefed on what to do. We'll have detectives that will be in plainclothes that'll be going between the different polling locations. If that does happen, we would ask that the senior person at the poll contacts us through the 911 line or one of our telephone lines, and we'll send an officer over there to keep, it's more of an education thing, I would suggest than anything else. And our officers are really good at that. They're trained at that, and they excel at keeping the peace and getting voluntary compliance from people. I don't anticipate making arrests or things of that nature.
Okay, thank you for that. But I guess, and I have complete confidence in your officers on this, Chief. I'm not discrediting them. I'm just saying, if we are painting this huge picture where everyone agree, and, oh my gosh, election day is going to be a disaster in our country and our community, I guess my fear would be if someone does, you know, show up with a firearm, one of the speakers said, why would a person want to bring a gun in? Well, we heard one person say for their own self-defense. So there are legitimate reasons why a person would want to carry as they vote. But would we, would we, if a person just absolutely does not comply, would we be issuing a citation? Because I don't see that a resolution has anything to that effect.
I would defer to Attorney Chavez about what a city ordinance would be. I believe it would just be a simple citation.
So this would actually be a statutory requirement. So under state law, if we, if we adopt the resolution prohibiting it, the only thing we have to do is post the sign. And then it's a violation of state statute.
It's a violation of state statute. What would the penalty be for violation?
I'd have to go find that out for you.
Okay, could we, I mean, it is important, because I do, if we are anticipating some, some really weird scenarios, we have to anticipate this. And how long will that take, Attorney Chavez?
I have to do some research. You're gonna have to give me a few minutes.
Okay. Well, Mayor, if Attorney Chavez finds that you can, if there's any other speakers, I'm fine with.
We do have, thank you, Alder. We do have Alders Dorf and Galvin in the queue.
I don't have anything right now, Mayor. I guess I just forgot to turn that off when I opened the floor. Thank you.
Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask, and unfortunately, Attorney Chavez is the one that could probably answer this, is this ordinance going to be from now on until we decide to rescind it in the future at some point in time? I mean, will it be good for 2021, 2022, any other election going forward?
Resolutions stay in effect until they are, until another resolution changing things is adopted.
Okay. And if it doesn't pass, and life goes back to normal next year, God willing, and we move our polling places back to where they used to be, then in the cases of, say, like the church that was mentioned that has posted no weapons, that would prevent voters from carrying weapons into that facility. Is that correct?
It's kind of murky situation because private property owners are entitled to, to do whatever they want as far as posting and prohibiting carry. When we have access to the buildings, it's kind of been a murky situation. So I don't have a solid answer for you on whether or not it would apply to all polling locations, or just, if it would apply to private locations that are being used as polling places, or if the requirement that it be a polling location trumps it.
Okay. And then I guess regardless of what the penalty is, which is what Alder Burnett is getting at, my concern is if John Citizen walks into a location with a weapon, and he's observed with it, and he's asked to leave, and he refuses, and so we call the police department to show up. If he refuses to leave, my understanding would be that he would then be placed in custody and taken away, whether he receives a citation or has to post bond in, some type of bond to ensure that he would show up for court at a later date. But that's my underst, stay wrong in that?
That's a question for the chief. These would not be handled at the municipal level since it would be a violation of state law.
And I think you're correct, sir. I think we would do everything we can to educate the person, to try and convince him that, you know, this is a path that leads to, you know, him being ultimately arrested. But if that were the case, and somebody had to push it and was trying to make a point, then we would be able to, you know, take that person into custody like we would for any other violation like that. Again, I'm an optimist, and I hope it doesn't get there, but optimism is not a great, as you know, policing strategy. We have to be ready for things.
We did run into a couple incidents at my polling location where we had a number of at-risk individuals that were using the building. We were using two rooms out of a larger building. The building was, many individuals that were health-wise were at risk. We had two individuals without masks, and there was one individual that made the statement, well, the sheriff's not going to enforce the mask law anyway, so I'm refusing to leave, and you can't stop me from voting. Luckily, the inspector did some real good verbal interaction with this individual, but it took almost 10 minutes to come to a resolution. And so I guess if we're gonna have people getting upset just about a mask, my concern is we have individuals walking in with that same kind of attitude as it comes to their weapons. Something like that could escalate. And so I just wanted to see what the, I was wondering what the end result would be if they ultimately did reply. I appreciate that answer, Chief. Thank you.
It looks like it's a Class B forfeiture. Do you know what that would equate to as far as a fine goes?
Yeah.
If not, I can keep looking. I just thought you might.
Well, Mayor, if I could have the floor back, well, Attorney Chavez, I can kind of explain my reasoning is that it is tense in our country, in our community. We need to come together as a community, as a people. And if ever there is a sign that we cannot allow politicians divide us, both sides, extreme sides, this is what is created now, to the point that in this city, poll workers are afraid to work the polls, to allow democracy to work. People have done this to us, and maybe to some degree, we're all responsible as Americans that we allowed our hatred of each other get to this point on a partisan scale. And so it's really unfortunate. So now we have a situation where a person will come to exercise their vote, their right to vote, for whatever reason, they decide to have a firearm. Perhaps it's because they want some protection because of what we're painting this to be, this horrid situation where people are gonna shooting, are gonna be shooting and intimidating each other. So a person will show up to vote with a firearm at their side, which is their right. And our police officers or our poll workers will ask them to leave. Perhaps they don't want to give up their firearm. Perhaps they don't want to leave. So now we are basically going to possibly arrest them and not allow them to vote because they do not want to comply with a resolution we're putting in place two weeks before the election, when many people have voted already. I'm uneasy about it for a lot of reasons, not because I'm a gun nut, which I'm certainly not, but I understand why people cling to their right to bear arms, especially in contentious times. Also not comfortable putting our officers in a very precarious position and highly tense situation across the entire city. I don't want to bring attention to this. I think if you pass something like this, especially two weeks before the election, no matter what your reason is, many valid reasons why many of you would vote yes, and I don't discredit or I don't argue with many of your points because they're valid. My point is, we're gonna be bringing more attention to the situation. So now people may say, what in the world is the city of Green Bay doing now? They're gonna deny us our right to bear, you know, a concealed carry or something, open carry. That is our right. We've gone through classes and gone through all the proper permitting and training classes to exercise that right. It's tough all the way around, right? But we cannot forget why this is. We're divided as a people, and we deserve better from our leaders, from our community, from our politicians, our special interests. Everyone in America is responsible to some degree, I would argue, whether either you are voicing this ritual, posting comments on social media, the hatred has been festering. I don't, I don't like it because of the real-world applications we're all facing now. So I don't feel comfortable with passing the resolution. As Attorney Chavez, if you have that number, that total, that's great. If not, then honestly, I don't think it would affect my decision at this point.
If a forfeiture of not $16,000, the judge has discretion from $1 to $1,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any further comments?
Yep, I do.
Go ahead, Alder Murray.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. If I could clarify with Attorney Chavez, there was some discussion with Alderman Burnett. We don't know if this law will cover all polling locations or just those directly under our control, like the Sears or...
No. No. What I'm saying is that if, what the question that got posed was whether or not, if this didn't go through with the fact that private locations had posted no trust or no carry signs, which is different. If this goes through, yes, we absolutely have the right to prohibit.
Okay, perfect. That answers it. I appreciate it. Yeah, Alder Burnett brought up a few important points. I, I think this is just, it's a feel-good measure, unfortunately. It's a solution looking for a problem. And really, as Alder Burnett stated, this could potentially create issues that would not have been there before. People who may have brought their sidearm with them to vote are not gonna know about this. They may not see the sign go in, and all of a sudden, they're being told they have to, they have to go back to the car and disarm. We're creating that situation. All right? Really, this is, for me, maybe not for others, I understand, this is irrational feelings versus constitutional rights. Do we get to take away a constitutional right because some people have these feelings that they can't get over? It's a perceived protection, really. If you're putting a sign up, that doesn't mean there won't be guns in there. Come on now, we're smart folks, right? We're adults. Putting a sign up does not mean there won't be guns in there. Bad guys and ladies don't care. They don't care. They don't turn around when they see the sign or hear there's an ordinance. They're going in to do whatever they're gonna do. And for me, as a poll worker coming up here, I sure hope someone in the building has a concealed carry. You want some good people there who want to protect themselves and others with them. I don't want just bad people running around with guns. And that's what this is pretending. And it's sending a loud signal right now. We are creating unsafe zones. It's shooting the flare up. We are putting out unsafe zones, just so we know. It has a couple of those issues. And it's nice to see I agree with Ms. Ringel, Ms. Delvo, on that item. So it's good to agree with him on something. We've been around for, what, 160 years as a city. We've had contentious collections before. You cannot tell me this is the most contentious election because none of us have been around that long. I'm sure back in the 1800s, there was some issue that the farmers were all worked up about, and the state folk, and, you know, there have been tales of the farmers coming in with their pitchforks to go after elected officials because they were gonna be sent off to war, you know? And a lot of contention, and we haven't had these issues. I think I've said just about everything I wanted to say. I think also, and I think everybody probably realizes this as well, just using common sense, most, especially in winter, you don't know if they're carrying ordinance or not, signs or not. And I'm just, that's true. Same with bad guys. So I just think this is misguided. I don't think we need it. We haven't needed it. I think we've been frustrated. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf?
Thank you. So I know I do have something to say. First of all, a number of people, at least seven or eight emails, three texts, two poll workers contacted me today all asking me to vote yes on this. I am on the elections committee, and part of being on the elections committee was to ensure that we have a good election. And a huge part of it was to support our poll workers and our clerk. And our clerk and our poll workers are asking for this, and they will feel supported, and they will feel safer, and they will be more willing to work. Then I don't think it's something that I would want to vote against. I definitely will vote for this. It's one day. It's five minutes, maybe, or maybe an hour in a person's life. If the poll workers, and there are more than two or three or four, don't want weapons in the polling places... and there are more than two or three or four, don't want weapons in the polling places, then I'm going to support them as a part of the elections committee and as an alder on the city council. Thank you.
Alder. Alder Scannell.
Alder Scannell? I'm clicking away here and nothing's happening. First, before I take the floor, I've seen Chris Teskey trying to get in some words. I defer to Chris speak before I speak.
Yeah, you bet. Clerk Teskey?
Thank you, Alder Scannell. I just, this was brought forward not to start anything with the rights and everything. This is for the poll workers. We saw what happened in April when COVID came around. People didn't want to work because of COVID. Understandable. Now they're asking us, you know, we want to feel safe and then we'll work. So the voters have a choice, many different choices to vote, different ways. For us to get poll workers, there's no choice. We either have them or we don't, and then people can't vote. So we are trying, for the people that have stepped up to work in this pandemic, now asking to just not have weapons because of the political atmosphere. This is for the poll workers. We are, this has nothing to do with you can't carry, you can't carry. It's for the poll workers who are...
What is the purpose?
Excuse me, the floor is closed and only members of the committee or staff members can speak. Thank you. Please continue, Clerk Teskey.
So I, I just want to make that clear. It, it just has to do with the poll workers who have no choice but to sit there with people coming in. That's the only reason why this was brought forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of the clerk?
I'll relieve, you know, certainly.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Alder Scannell.
No, you can take your question and then I'll speak.
Okay.
Weary, go ahead.
Clerk, did we ask all poll workers? Because I think we have, what, 300, 350 now? Or did we just listen to four to seven? Because that really doesn't tell you much. I mean, if you would have asked everyone, I'm a poll worker, and I would have told you I'm fine with it. So, and I could probably get you a dozen or more who said they're fine with it. But telling us four to seven, eh, you know, doesn't necessarily tell us.
Four to seven, when I know that they are representing their team, they're not all going to tell me, like Denise. I know that she was at two elections. She worked with some of the same people. It's not, I didn't take a poll. I...
It's just kind of, you know, maybe. I just, do you think a majority, a simple majority can negate inalienable rights?
I think most of the poll workers.
If majority can do away with constitutional rights, just because they feel that way.
Alder Weary, you know that we did not have enough poll workers in April. You want to have that same situation again?
I know. I'm just saying, though, this is a right.
We don't need to get into running back and forth here.
Yep, yep. And I'd like to speak now.
Alder Scannell.
About that right. Hooey. Let's hear this, where's this argument on Packer Game Day when we had, when we could go into the stadium? Guns aren't allowed there. I don't hear all this righteous talk then. Corks, you can't bring a gun into court. There's plenty of places where this right is ends, and for safety reasons. And that a number of poll workers, seven is fine by me. That's a good enough number. I think that's representative of many others. Let's say it's two dozen. That's a significant number. And I think it's probably bigger than that. But it doesn't matter. I'm not going to get into the numbers. We know there's enough poll workers, or some poll workers are concerned. I understand that concern. I appreciate that concern. I'm going to support them. And all the arguments about gun rights is just a lot of blather. Seriously. There are limitations. You act as if you can carry gun no matter what, anytime, everything. You can't. And this is another instance where I believe it's appropriate and for safety reasons where you can't. So I support this. I hope we can move forward in a safe way, whatever happens. But I have no problem with telling gun rights activists, yes, you have the right, but it's not unlimited. You can't bring a gun into the Packer Stadium. Don't laugh at me. You can't bring a gun into the Packer Stadium.
I'm laughing at you. Sorry.
Try it, Alder Weary. Try it.
I'm laughing at you. I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Alder Weary, Alder.
I can laugh. I do another comedy if no one else says.
Yeah, you can laugh.
No, we've got people. Are you finished, Alder Scannell? Alder Lufave.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I'm voting for this. The reason is, now I'm hearing that we have poll workers, and it's probably more than just the few that spoke up that have concerns, and some are really nervous about this issue. And remember, we had some alders. I'm not going to say who. We're so upset with what happened in spring. And that's just because of the COVID, that a lot of the poll workers backed out. I'm not going to jeopardize that we, we're going to end up going through some kind of fiasco again, like what happened in spring, because we're going to have poll workers who are going to say, no, I'm not going to come. If you're not going to support us, we're not going to show up. This could be more than you think. And we could end up being, again, where we're going to have just one or two polling places, and we're going to have lines again, people standing in the cold. Who knows what the weather's going to be like, standing for hours. I'm voting for this. I'm sorry. This is something, come on. If you're a citizen, for Pete's sakes, come together and realize that for once, you don't have to have your weapon there. And as Alder Scannell, someone has said, come on, there's other places where you cannot bring your gun in or any weapon. There's reasons for it. There's a reason here. And if we don't support our poll workers, I don't know what we're going to do. Thank you.
Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer up an amendment, and then I'll, I'll speak to it if it gets a second. But, but I would move that we amend the document, and however legal we'd need to word it, so that this particular resolution only applies to the November 2020 election.
Attorney Chavez?
You would just need to, well, we can't, we can, I can look at the language, but essentially it would just say for the 2020 election to be held on November 3rd.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
A second for a discussion.
Okay. So I'm listening to the conversation on this. And admittedly, when I came into this, I was, I was on the fence about it. And quite frankly, I still do remain on the fence. And one of the things that oftentimes when I listen to these arguments, I, you know, I think, I think both sides sometimes have a tendency to paint a more extreme picture than what's reality. You know, on one end, I think, you know, it's, it's being painted as people will be unsafe if they're allowed. On the other end, it's, you know, we're continuing to infringe on these, these rights, and eventually we won't be able to have guns anymore. And I don't think, you know, either one of those extremes is really reality. And so I'm looking to see if we can find some middle ground here. It, it seems to me that the issue that's come up is that tensions are high for this election. The number of poll workers have expressed concern for this election. We want to make sure that we have enough poll workers this election and that we're not losing those again for this election. And so I, I have a, I'm always a little bit leery when we talk, talk about making semi-permanent or permanent policy changes based on anecdotes. And, and I don't know that there's been, you know, a real, a whole lot of information being presented to talk about risks or, or feedback that have been presented in the past. And so I think if, the middle ground here seems to me to address this election, and if we can do that successfully, we can ensure that we're not going to lose poll workers for this election. There's not a permanent change to the privilege that comes with those, or that comes with the state law that is currently in place. And so that, that's the purpose of the amendment. I think if the amendment were to be supported, I would have a tendency to support, I would have a tendency to vote yes on this. Again, if it, if it were supported, that it would apply just to this election. And if we feel the need then to revisit this for future elections, we have the ability to gather a little bit more information and, and have that dialogue looking forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Comments on the amendment? Alder Corpus Dax, would you like to comment on the amendment?
I'll wait.
Okay. Alder Galvin on the amendment?
Thank you, Your Honor. And this amendment with the other one. Everyone knows, retired police officer. And anytime I went on a call, the less people with guns on that call, the safer I felt. I never liked to think that there was anyone, whether they, legal right to carry a gun or an illegal right to carry a gun, standing around me on a call. I felt unsafe because I don't know those people. I don't know why they have that gun. I don't know what they're thinking, what's on their mind, what's going on. And I've never met an officer that enjoyed having anyone around them with a weapon other than other officers. I know that we're talking about poll workers here, but I did reference it, Alder Johnson, that, you know, we can look at this down the road. If we want these same poll workers to stay with, with this job, we're going to be looking at this problem down, down the road then. And as Alder, I mean, as Attorney Chavez says, it's murky once we get back into the other areas, whether some are posted and some aren't posted. I, I think I'd prefer something that's clean, that's long-term. I mean, if, if it's all we have, I'll support it, but I would prefer having a, the original proposal go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. We got a bunch of people, their buttons pressed. I don't know if it's related to the amendment, however. So if you could make sure you're pressed to speak on this item, this motion, I'd appreciate it. And we have Alder Dorf and Alder Scannell.
Nope. And I, I took it off.
I also took mine off.
Okay. Any others on the amendment? Okay, seeing no further debate, we have a motion and a second to identify November 3rd, 2020, as the election upon which this resolution would apply. So seeing no further debate.
Mayor, what's your opinion?
Yes, Attorney Chavez?
It should actually be for the November election rather than just the date of the election, the general election, because it should apply to all of the polling locations equally, which would include the early in-person voting.
Okay. This would be applying to November 2020 election. And Alder Johnson has requested board. We will do that.
A point. I second.
What's that, Alder?
I'm, I'm kind of on the fence with it. I second Alder Johnson's motion if I vote no per se.
Missing some of those comments. Are you asking if you can second a motion and then vote against it?
That's...
I'm not hearing your comments, Alder. I don't know if that's just me or if you have a bad connection.
Bad internet connection? Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's better now.
Yeah, that, that's, you, you got my question correct, Mayor. I second the motion, but if I choose to vote against it, is that okay procedurally?
I don't think that's...
Or do I have to withdraw my second?
I don't think that's a problem. Attorney Chavez?
Seconding a motion does not require you to vote in favor of it.
Thank you.
Okay, request has been made to use the board, so we will do that.
My board doesn't work. I'm going to say no.
That fails seven to five. Now we have the original motion in front of us. Final comments on, on the motion or on the item itself?
Yep. Last comment.
The Alder Weary?
It just, you know, we really need to use common sense here because this problem must have really built up over 160 years. Boy, it must have just been just bubbling below the surface and all of a sudden, bam, now it's an issue. Let's use, let's use common sense. Signs and laws stop the good guys. Right? Those who want to obey the law and the sign will not care. Not the bad guys, though. So you're setting up a bad situation. All this does, so some people can feel good. Think about that, please. I mean, it's just such common sense. All you're doing is, it'll be a nice headline, and you can say, hey, we're not having weapons in there. Well, they'll let you know of. It's just really dumbfounded me how simple this is. And you start, Alder, Alder Scannell was right. When you do start whittling away at your rights, because you can always make an excuse for a little more, a little more, a little more, a little more. I mean, you can always, and you can see in some states, California, New York, they whittle down their gun rights and things like that. It's almost nothing. Well, you know, I, I'm going to vote no. I, I haven't heard a reason, a sound reason that this will actually do anything except make it more unsafe. Thank you.
Weary, Alder Galvin?
Here, Your Honor. I've had a total of 13 people contact me on this ordinance, eight of them which live in my district. Several of those are poll workers. All those people that have contacted me want this ordinance in place. And again, like I said, I'm a firm believer in less guns, less trouble, less problems. I can't trust the fact that someone went through a four-hour classroom training on concealed being in the state of Wisconsin and suddenly the person I want pulling a trigger in, in a confrontation, or trying to make a decision of who to shoot or who not to shoot, or even though he's got his concealed carry doesn't make him a good guy. They could just make him a bad concealed carry. It doesn't make the difference. If they make a decision, you wrong reason at the last second, then I, I just think the more we can do to prevent guns in the polling places and to make people feel safer, I think we should do that. I'm going to vote yes for this. Thank you.
Alder. Alder Corpus Dax?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to support the ban, simply because we don't allow guns in City Hall. Early in-person voting occurs at City Hall. That should extend to all of the other polling locations. That's it.
Any other comments?
Actually, a point of order, carrying a sidearm at City Hall is allowed. We voted on that a number of years ago. As part of the vote, it was a big discussion. You can carry at City Hall.
Okay.
I just pointed that out. You probably weren't aware of it. Yeah, that's okay.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second.
We use the board, Mayor? We use the board, Mayor?
Yep, absolutely. Request has been made to use the board. They vote yes. And that is successful, eight to four. Onto receiving.
Motion to receive and file. Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, second about Alder Dorf, to receive and place on file the building permanent municipal court reports for September 2020. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Report has been received and placed on file. Resolutions?
Commander, suspension of...
Yeah, so I will entertain a motion to adopt resolutions one through seven.
Except for one and four.
Oh, yes. So, yes. So, yes. Uh, how are those resolutions handed now, turn, handled, Attorney Chavez? The, um, Velp Avenue and 901 Main.
Those are the two, um, plan commission items?
Yes.
So those ones would just, um, be ignored at this point. They're on the agenda as action items. But if the other items have ultimately failed or have been referred back, then those items should not be taken up. You can, you can, um, receive and place on file, but at this point, I would just recommend you skip them.
Okay. So we will heed that advice and ignore those resolutions. So entertain a, a motion to adopt resolutions two, three, five, six, and seven.
We're moved.
Okay.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to suspend the rules and take up those items with one roll call. Although, if you're saying aye.
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 May. Yes, have it. Those are suspended. Motion to adopt.
Mayor, Mayor, I think you said, uh, let's see, you said down to, uh, number seven. You did not include number eight.
Correct. We're gonna have, we're gonna have a, a, a freestanding vote on that.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adopt.
Back end.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder, Alder Dorf to adopt. We will use the board.
I vote yes.
Again, resolutions two, three, five, six, seven.
I vote yes.
And those are successful eleven to one. Alder Burnett intending to vote no there?
Uh, slippery finger, but I, please change to yes if you could, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
As unanimous, 12-0. So we're on resolution eight.
Would you approve?
Again.
Motion seconded by Alder Scanell. We will use the board.
I vote yes.
Leads eight to four. Onto ordinance's first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 May, the eyes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Second.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Advance items one through four. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Right.
May. Have it. May have been advanced to final adoption. Onto referral of petitions communications.
Um, I'm not sure if this goes to protection and policy or planning, but refer to staff to look at, um, regulations regarding the current zoning code and, and drive-through and pickup lanes and the necessity of bypass lanes and/or miniboards.
As you go to plan commission.
Plan commission.
Okay.
Alder? Any other communications? Alder Lefave?
Yes, um, one I have written out. There's two that I have to check a couple of things with, um, that I can still submit them after the committee, I mean, after the, uh, council. Um, this one here goes to Parks. I'm asking Parks to look at Farland Park's parking lot, which is on Eastman Avenue, and the location of the playground equipment and splash pads. As the parking lot is almost a block away, is causing people to park illegally in the 1,500 blocks, block of, uh, Smith Street, which is a dead end.
Thanks, Alder. You have another communication?
Uh, no, I have to wait. I gotta find out two more, uh, things on them and I will, uh, submit them, uh, probably within a day or two. That's still accept, acceptable, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And, and I will send this, I will type this out and send it to, um, Chris Teske.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Other.
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead, Alder.
To the Traffic Commission, consideration with possible action on changing the speeding limit on Hillcrest.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? Seeing no others, I'll entertain a motion to refer.
Motion to refer, even though everybody could have done these tomorrow and then we wouldn't have to pay for them. Motion to refer.
Thanks, Randy.
You have a second?
A second, second, yes.
Motion by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to refer all late petitions and communications to the proper authority. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
May. Guys have it. Petitions and communications have been referred.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Scanell. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Guys have it. We're adjourned. Night, everybody.
Good night.